Uh, meeting for today, March thirtieth to order.
What do you want, everything? Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
I make a motion to unseal the non-public meetings as listed.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
I, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
I, public input.
Uh, Jenna.
I'll start with this, uh, update then. Um, so last time I was here, you guys asked to, um, ask the difference between residents and non-residents and rentals, so I added that to the chart. So this is pretty current, um, with the rentals this year, uh, obviously the rentals that we've already took in and the pending rentals or everything I have pending, like deposits are down, but the event hasn't happened yet. So we're on track to have a really good year. I mean, that's only probably until, I think I have one or two events in like September and October, but this is all like April, May rentals, that four thousand five hundred and sixty-five is the next couple of months. So I think we'll have a good year here. It's probably our best year.
Yeah, you can do thirty-three-hundred a quarter roughly.
Yeah, so obviously, uh, as you can tell, residents obviously are taking, we're renting more to residents, but, um, the non-residents are slowly increasing. I think the more rentals we get, the more people come out of town from it.
But you're also giving to the busy, and, and while there probably are people that are getting new deposits for business use, I'm sure you're getting more.
Yeah, that, the pending rentals are based on, they put a deposit down to book the date, but that's what their rental fee would be. That's not just a deposit down, like, that's all the pending ones they have on the book, total what they're planning to rent, you know, for four hours or whatever.
Okay, return to normalcy.
So, as for Saturdays, obviously, it's probably one of our busiest days. The next available Saturday I have available, um, is May twenty-eighth. So I'm booked until May twenty-eighth for Saturday.
Okay.
There you go, Bill. You can have that birthday party. It's open.
What about June, July, and August?
Um, I have like one or two in Ju- well, no, June, I get three Saturdays booked in June.
Okay.
July is pretty open. I did have a wedding that, um, had canceled on me. Um, so July's pretty open, but I tend to find we're about two months out.
Good.
Is when we really start to, you know, get really booked. It's generally two months out before. Um, so that being said, um, I have noticed some uptick in cancellations. So I want to propose, so right now, in order to book a day, we require the rental agreement filled out and a hundred-dollar deposit, which is refundable, to secure your date. And then at a later time, the insurance and the rest of the rental fee. Um, I'd like to propose, in order to reserve a date, the hundred-dollar refundable deposit, the agreement, and then fifty percent down of their rent fee. So if they're gonna rent it for four hours, I want the two hours upfront to book it. So that way, that is not refundable. So at least if they do cancel, we're, we're getting half of what they would have paid us if they weren't canceled. Um, I'm not getting like super a last minute, but a week, two-week cancellation, and that can be hard because at that point, people are already have figured out their, you know, party, their situation, their wedding, you know, like things like that. So, um.
If we could rent it, will we refund the deposit?
I, I mean, I kinda.
I'm just wondering if it's a month out, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't thought about that. I feel like it, I don't wanna say muddies the water, but it's kind of like.
Well, it doesn't have to be a policy they know about.
Yeah.
Could be something to do with.
Well, what I, what I would consider is if you check with other facilities to find out what their policy is.
Okay, I can't remember if I, when I came up with this, and I feel like Peterborough does it this way. I feel like that's kind of where I got this example, but, um, I will. Look at the other.
I mean, you're a keen country girl.
Oh, well, I mean, yeah, that's, you probably have to put a, a definite deposit down on something like that, for like an actual wedding venue. Yeah, I can check what they're, what they want. I'm sure they have like a payment, like installment type of thing, because five, six, seven grand is a lot different than two hundred dollars.
No, no, I understand, but by the same token, uh, you know, I, I don't think we should arbitrarily, uh, refund.
Oh, you're talking about the refund part of it? Not, okay.
You know, whatever.
Okay, I can do that. But as far as the, what I'm proposing to, in order to reserve the holiday, you come to with the fifty percent of the rental fee with a minimum of two hours.
Yes. As long as it's consistent with other facilities near it.
Okay. So then I'll have to look into that.
I don't think you have to call every single one. That's not what I'm saying. But what I am saying is that you ought to be consistent with other facilities.
So I'll call a couple and report back to the.
Was there one in Walpole that we had kind of compared to as well, or?
When we first did this agreement, we looked at a lot of them. I, I, I want to say Peterell does the same, fifty percent down of the rental fee, but I can, I can double-check and also check their refund policies, if you know what they are.
Do we still have a list of the, uh, people that put on weddings and things like that that we invited here?
I think the committee did that. I really don't know. I mean, that's still something I'd like to do. I just, I feel like it's a bit of an undertaking.
I'm just thinking that if we do have a list like that, if we do get a cancellation a month out, we might be able to put the notice out that you have an availability on Saturday or something like that.
I do tend to send out like so, like social media, uh, media to say, hey, we have an opening on this date. I mean, it has worked a couple times, and then a couple times I didn't get a rental from it, but it's one of those things. I think it just depends on when the party gets canceled. A week notice is hard for people, but two, three weeks, so I can probably do it.
See that on the sign for the VFW, VFW on Winchester Street, it says you can rent this.
That's something you want when there's no parties going on out there?
No, it's, I'm just thinking that somebody should call because they're probably rates are more comparable to us.
They make money on the bar. Imagine the room's twenty-five bucks.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey.
Did you, did you consider a drop dead date when the money would be hard? In other words, two weeks prior to the event? But if they don't cancel, if they cancel within that time period?
That's, I, I didn't necessarily think about that, because in our policy, we ask ten days prior for the final payment and insurance. So that kind of is like that ten-day window. Um, we've had a couple, we've only had like one or two that had canceled after they paid for the full rental fee, and they did not. One, one example was she canceled the morning of because of someone, someone had COVID, or she had, I'm not really sure, it was COVID-related. Um, but she didn't get her, her money back. She got a deposit back, but the rental fee I didn't give back, because I mean.
There's no chance of.
Yeah, um, I haven't had many cases like that. A week is generally, a week to two weeks is generally what I get from cancellation.
So it's kind of like de facto ten days, it's like the last, like you said, the payments.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Make that clear, maybe.
And it's a donation look at cause.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And something we can work into, too. We do have something similar for the weddings right now. So like if you book the wedding package, um, it's a two-hundred-dollar deposit, and it is refundable if you cancel forty-five days before forty-five days. Anything with a forty-five-day window of that, um, date, it's not refundable because it's a whole weekend.
Right.
So we can look at something like that, too.
Would you, did you consider extending the ten days to fourteen days?
Um, I was more, I was kind of more honed in on the, the, to book the day part, but we, we can definitely.
Just give you more time?
Yeah, yes, um, now when we're starting to get busy, that, that would work, but I do, in the winter months, I find people calling like fourteen days out to book a, book a, um, thing. So in that part, I would just request everything right then.
Anything else? Great job, Jenna.
Thank you.
So I'll look into it and come back, so I'll understand it.
Does she really need to come back?
Move forward unless you find a way off base maybe, or?
I think we're all consensus agreement that if the stamp is the right size, everybody's happy.
Okay. So when I go to.
Well.
Michael's handling it.
Consensus to move forward and we'll do, we'll do some checking.
To do.
Yeah, we'll do some, we'll do some checking.
On that, if you don't want.
You could just send us to us.
Or just put, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John. How are we, Joe?
I'm doing good, thanks. A few things tonight. I'll start off with Swerks Crossing Road. There's a small parcel of land there that's owned by the town across from where the Rhymes propane tanks are, kind of little pull-off that goes down the river, but it really serves no recreational purpose. It's too steep to access the river to go fishing. Uh, but it's a frequent dump site for, for garbage. Right now, there's a large amount of trash bags that were dumped. Uh, the PD's working on and trying to determine who did it. Um, we plan on cleaning it up, but it's gonna be a big enough issue that I think we should be seeking some restitution or giving to whoever the person is a chance to clean it up. It's a possibility that it was, somebody did some work for an elderly gentleman and dumped his trash there or so. Uh, but anyways, reason why I bring it up to you is we have an old gate at the DPW that we can put there, and I'm in favor of gating it. It serves no purpose. It's not like people going down there fishing. It's not like a place to go eat lunch. It's more nefarious stuff going on down there than anything else, and it is a, a common dump site.
The fire department's supposed to be working on a, uh, fire hydrant.
Dry.
Is that one of the hydrant locations?
So it's something that we easily can provide a key to that, and we, we put it down there, but the, the gate would literally be just our time installing it, and we are gonna clean it up, but I wanted to have the PD exhaust all the options, so I'm trying to determine, put this stuff there. And, uh, and then we'll clean it up, put a gate up as long as the boards that agree instead of it should be gated. I didn't wanna just go gated.
Isn't there a hydrant down there?
No, but when, when the dam was still in, we could draft out of it. Ryan said that, put in, when they put in their gas tanks, that was a
Okay.
Part of their approval.
Question, was it either damn?
No, it's just a place to draft water. It's just, we figured because it, it doesn't really freeze, you should be able, the river's always flowing there, so.
All right, but now it's too low.
Now it's a good bit lower because the dam came out, so something has to be done with the road to bring it down to the right level. And if Frog Brewery or whoever, they're coming.
Yeah, next door it is.
We might be able to do something if we could work with them.
Where are they going in?
To that grassy field to the left of that driveway.
Yeah, absolutely. They did an event there, I think, last year, but they don't have any, they don't have a building or anything.
Did, did, did they actually do that event?
Well, they were talked about.
Probably did. It was like a car show.
Yeah.
Were they, they're on a Marlboro?
Yes.
Okay.
But they said something about future site of, that might have been just, oh, good enough.
All right.
Go for it. Okay, I'll, I'll put the gate, and then our next thing, this, the roof here. So our guy or son initially gave, gave us a quote to do some repair to the slate, and then they recommended a snow belt, a, a metal snow belt. Initially, we told them to go forward with the, with the slave repair, but hold off on the snow belt. Then obviously, the funds were available through the snow belt, and then supply chain issues come in. They couldn't get it, they couldn't get it, and now when they're finally able to get it, the price has gone up. So it's, uh, it's an additional thousand dollars of, from what they initially quoted me. I did a little research. There's not a lot of roofers that do slates, so I did a little research into somebody else, and, um, Rupert told me that that was pretty reasonable under the circumstances, and that the larger companies that do slate can be quite a bit more money than this. So I just wanted to get a little more info for them before I, I come before you, and so that's where we're at. They're prepared to come in and do it, but unfortunately, it's an additional thousand-dollar expense because the cost of the metal. And, uh, and we're seeing that, well, why are we seeing that today with, with coal pricing on coalwork, five dollars, a substantial change in price from last year.
What do you need from us?
A motion, a thousand dollars from the Wickham Hall non-restricted account.
I'll make that motion.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
I, one thousand, I'm just repeating it for Beverly, one, one thousand from the Wickham Hall non-restricted account.
Okay.
Thanks.
And then the other, uh, financial issue is the bucket truck. Uh, oh, Dave Johnson did a lot of work while he was in Florida. Communicated with him on a regular basis, even while I was down there, and unfortunately, once again, supply chain and not contractors and power companies not being able to buy new trucks. They're buying up these used trucks and paying a lot more money for them than they were. Um, I had found one over here in Salem that I thought was going to be great for us, but when I looked at it mechanically, I did a bin check on it, and the guy called me three, four hours before I came there tonight to tell me that it was, that it was sold. So initially, the board had approved twenty-five thousand dollars for a, for a bucket truck, and everything we're running into is thirty to thirty-five thousand.
And you did find that one, but it didn't pass the.
Yes.
Hydraulic tests or something, or safety tests?
Yes, Dave found one, and I, you know, I didn't know a lot about bucket trucks until I took on this venture, and I did a lot of research by checking with the tree companies and everything. David found a truck that was really nice, but unfortunately, the, they make, some of the smaller trucks don't have insulated booms. The insulation protects you if you touch wires. A lot of the smaller cable company booms do not have them. So it's not necessarily that we have to have an insulated boom, because we're not, for the most part, gonna be planning on working around any wires. But what I learned is if you have a truck that is an insulated boom and had failed the inspection, it no longer meets the requirements. You're asking for trouble buying something that's defective, even though it's essentially the same as if you buy a non-insulated boom. The fact that it, it's supposed to do this and no longer can do it, I was told, told don't buy it. Yeah, so, so that one struck out. And, uh, Pursuit, there's a company in Rhode Island, uh, that buys low-mileage trucks directly from Spectrum. They're smaller, which we want, we want, the crew wants, and I want, and a lot of reasons, it makes sense to get the smaller truck. Uh, but they get a lot of Spectrum low-mileage Spectrum, Spectrum trucks. Unfortunately, they're gas motors. Uh, but nothing has been in the price range of the, of the twenty-five thousand. Um, I toyed with the idea of holding up to see if things go down in price, but it's out of, out of pieces of equipment that we need. I mean, you drive around town. I was on Matthews Road today. You see the canopies coming in like this, and it's not feasible to be out there with a loader. Not only are you tying up two people, one person running the loader, one person in the, in the attachment trying to cut the brush. It's that much harder traffic, and obviously, the safety issue. I'm not all that crazy about having the guys up in the loader bucket, even though they have a safety cage that, that is made up. So, uh, I still would like to move forward with purchasing one, if we can find the right truck. I'm not just gonna round there to buy something, but unfortunately, I don't look back to twenty-five thousand dollars. It's going to, going to, uh, do it. We've had some time, because I, I previously stated, our plan moving forward is uh, the dirt roads are in need of attention. They need to dry a little bit more. We, we dodged mud season because we didn't have that crazy warm-up this year. We essentially have no mud, but the dirt roads are really rough right now. They just need to dry up a little bit. Our plan, as soon as they're able to be graded, we need to get all the dirt roads graded, and then we have to shift over on South Road and Mill Lane. I've been working with the state, uh, the catch basins that are near the ball field on Mill, Mill Lane, they're basically dry bases. They don't go anywhere, but taking an easement from the blakes on South Road to dump the, the, uh, water out of those catch basins onto their property to run a drainage pipe to, uh, an outlet, and the state has approved it. So we need to get that done because they're coming in to pave in June, so that's priority after the roads get graded. And then we need to get up on Talvin Hill Road and get the rest of the drainage, the pipes done, because that is going to be moved forward with, uh, with paving. But once we get that stuff done, then we, then we have some leeway to start doing this other stuff. But we really need to, I really need to get out, cutting brush on a regular basis so we can get caught back up. It's, it's essentially all what we're downing. It needs to be done. So, uh, I, I would ask for the authorization to, to, to spend up to thirty-five thousand if the right bucket truck comes available.
What was the one in Salem?
One in Salem was perfect. I actually hit the, um, local dealership here, ran a bin check on it for me today. It was a, it was a five-fifty-four, similar to the size trucks that we're using. It had a diesel motor in it. That's like one we have, had a hundred thousand miles on it, and come out of a municipality in New York, one owner. And, uh, the guys went over and looked at it while I was in Florida, and, um, it wasn't, they weren't sure if it was gonna be available then. He told me it was available. Here, I was planning on coming tonight, and he called me and I apologized just before I got in here that it was, uh,
How much was that?
Just under thirty-thousand-eight-hundred.
So we gave you approval for twenty-five. You were gonna ask for five, now you're asking for ten. You want thirty-five to?
I would say up to. I'm still gonna try to keep it in that thirty, thirty-two range, but what I'm afraid is if I ask you for thirty-two, which I think I'll be able to find something. If something really good comes along, am I gonna, gonna lose it again? But I really do, uh, I, I, I think it would be a great piece of equipment for the town, especially for us with the trees, but facilities, the fire department, you, you police department out of accident scenes, taking pictures, and, uh, and I, the smaller trucks, the non-CDL trucks are more expensive than the big ones. But A, I don't want guys up sixty-s somewhat feet in the air, and then, like Trevor brought up a good point, working on a road like Matthews when you're low, those booms are so big. They're used to being up in the air, then to cut across, this elbow is gonna be out in traffic, back in traffic, whereas if you have a smaller truck, you're only occupying the one lane. So, but I mean, Dave Johnson must have looked at ten different trucks, and the bids on were just absolutely through the roof.
Hopefully, some municipalities areas gotten approval at their time, and should have one coming up.
We were looking.
What kind of news is that, Dan?
We, I, I've exhausted all options with this. We were looking at a truck that needed mass on municipal, and a lot of times in municipalities, Massachusetts, like the Cruiser that we, we bought at the PD to use Cruiser. They keep the maintenance up, and they don't have a lot of mileage. This truck was probably a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar truck, brand new. It was like a two thousand and nine with forty thousand miles on it. It was clean as can be. And here I am, think I was talking to Michael about it in the morning, like, should I put a bid on it for twenty-three thousand five hundred? Sold for forty grand. It was like half an hour before it was at twenty thousand. It ended at like, I can't remember, thirty-eight and change. It just went up. Um, and it, that would have been really bigger than what we needed, but.
Want a motion?
Yes, please.
Now, do you wanna, how do you want it worded? To add ten thousand?
Additional ten, yes.
I'll make that motion.
He saved a bunch of money on his, uh, last pickup truck purchase, so.
Yeah. Oh, that's the last pickup we're ever gonna purchase? Great.
The two-five-fifty became well-under as well.
That's right.
Yeah, the two-five-fifty trucks came well, well, well under, so we saved some money there. But like I said, yeah, my, we're not gonna go out there just to buy something to buy, but um, ideally, we want a diesel, but if we can't get a diesel, we'll go with a, with a gas model, but.
Does anybody make a trailer mount?
I, I looked at some of that, and nothing, nothing that's that stable.
Right.
Okay.
So it's still working? May, seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you.
Kind of put it in places.
But let's not lose one over a thousand bucks.
Yeah. I was tempted, but I didn't wanna come, I was tempted to spend the money out of my operating budget to go above that twenty-five thousand, but I said, I better not. I better come before the board, before I do it.
Going over a thousand, going over six would have meant a little, little bit of a stretch.
If you have to go back to Florida.
He was gonna drive it back.
Look around.
Hit every dog of course on the way.
Let's just laugh at all the way, the way things are going, and then talking to the dealership today. Like I said, running that bin number, it's just, it's the same thing. People paying way too much money for stuff.
Your new truck should be cheap, right?
Yeah.
New truck?
Yeah. Especially if the sewer commission pays for something.
They were open to the Explorer idea.
We could do some allowing for it, so, yeah. See where it goes. But other than that, I'm laughing. Things are going pretty good. It was kind of weather on our side, and I'm glad that we dodged the mud season that we didn't have last year, so.
Talvin Hill's gonna be ready to go this year?
It is. All, all state has it a little bit. Um, so it's just a matter of, like I say, getting those dirt roads buttoned up, and then we need to get going with drainage work, and we should be able to accomplish that by the end of May and start paving in June.
Now, the asphalt price goes month to month, right?
The bid's in, so it's, um.
How long's it good for?
It's that they, they're, they have a contract. Once they sign that contract, that's the cost, and I don't know what happens with that. Uh, they haven't given me my annual price on the smaller projects, but they're, I, I, I was worried. I was worried that the price is gonna come back so high that we weren't gonna be able to do anything. Um, so their cost, putting it down is about twelve dollars more than it was last year. So I was told that our cost will probably be similar. Um, I think I paid sixty-two dollars for it last year, so I'm thinking probably gonna be paying around seventy-five dollars a ton for it.
That's what it was, I think, four or five years ago.
Yeah, so it's, but I haven't gotten the price yet.
Right.
And, and, and who knows? But as far as them doing that work, they're, uh, they're, they're in Allstate, I think, was pretty pleased to get it.
Good.
Yeah, that'll be on the agenda next week. We just had to, Larry wasn't at the pre-bids, or at the, uh, bin openings, so I needed to wait for inspect, so I didn't have any time, but we have thirty days, I think, to accept it, so we got plenty of time.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, John.
Northern Borders Regional Commission upcoming grant round. Uh, so this was the grant that we pursued for, uh, South Winchester, West and Swansea Street, so it's, um, Northern Borders Region, fortunately, even though we're not the most northern, uh, county, obviously, in Hampshire, but, so it's, it's an infrastructure grant. They like doing roads and bridges and that sort of project, especially if you can tie it to development. We obviously made the case with the mill, um, last time. I think we could make that case again, so I'd like to, uh, propose that we go forward with North Winchester and California Street, uh, applying for a grant for those two. They've increased the, um, total grant award. It used to be up to five-hundred thousand, now it's up to a million. Um, I don't know that we'll necessarily end up going for the full million, but I think we'll probably be somewhere in the middle. Um, so we'd like to have Underwood update the estimates that they already did for North Winchester about three years ago, and do the same effort for California Street, so we can, um, meet that deadline and then apply. We need a letter of intent uh, later in April, and then the grant is due basically at the beginning of June.
So which streets again, North?
North Winchester and California to.
And not Swansea?
Correct, Swansea's included in the current.
Including Swansea, okay.
And where do we stand on California Street as far as what it is? Let me, some thought of doing the one lane?
That'd be part of the engineering, would be to look at that, engage the, engage the public, see, see what people think. I think, you know, on paper, it makes sense to try to make them some degree of one way in, one way out. People probably will hate it, but it's worth looking at, I think. It's, it's pretty narrow, as we know.
Widen it.
Uh, there's not a lot of real estate in there. There's houses pretty close.
The sidewalk would have to go.
There's a sidewalk here, too.
Yeah. So it's looking at all the options, though. I think. So I think even if we don't end up, either if we end up delaying the projects, I think if we don't end up doing California as part of this, I think it makes sense to try to engineer them together where they're tied right in like that. Um, even if it's just for the study purposes, and depending on where the, where the costs come in, um, can always pull back, but I think at this point, it makes, there's some efficiency to look at them at the same time, in that, uh, amount, which I don't have here, but they had emailed me, I think it was thirty-six-hundred.
That's right here.
Oh, I did, okay, you have, yeah. That's right, I put it in after. Yep.
Like a motion?
Yes, please.
Up to how much?
Thirty-six-hundred?
Thirty-six-hundred.
Over a hundred bucks, yeah.
Any discussion, all in favor?
I. We'll get better.
Anti-arrestment discrimination update.
So this is obviously a pretty boilerplate one, uh, as we're talking about the work on personnel policies. So this was something, actually, the Joint Loss Management Committee had pretty much, um, ready to go, so it didn't take too much, um, too much, uh, work to get it ready to approve. So, again, fairly straightforward. There's not a lot of latitude. If you have, um, if you have questions or ideas, we can. If you have questions or ideas, we can talk about those. There's, like I said, not, not a lot of flexibility, pretty boilerplate.
Next year.
No, I'd like to, uh, oh, yeah. No, Smith. I'd like to see it stop action because I don't think you really hit it.
The actors.
Yeah.
You're very honest.
Anything from us on this? Without that or?
Yes, that'd be great.
I'll make the motions.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor?
I. Um, one item not listed, but the, uh, trustees of trust funds asked that I put it before you and I see Mr. Bitterus joined us as well. Uh, they had found a LLC to do their accounting work, so they are extremely excited. They interviewed a gentleman, uh, named Dwayne Towns. Uh, Towns and Co LLC is his company, so, uh, they would like to engage him ASAP. Should be within our name, but I think even maybe under budget, so.
You don't.
No, I have it here. Uh, he's in Key.
Okay.
He's a CPA.
Yes.
I didn't amend his phone.
Oh, great. Yep, and he, uh, so they initially found a lady that they thought might be interested. She's gonna be an alternate, so we'll have that on for next week. And then she recommended this gentleman who she works with, I guess, over at Franklin Pierce, so they're extremely excited, as you can imagine.
I bet Steve is.
Yes, he is. He was almost doing a jig.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
So move, I don't know, second.
Motion made a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Congratulations.
Amen.
Now, is she on the corner of Airport Road?
She is not. She's in Swansea Center, which they're also excited about for whatever reason. Right. Some diversity from all the East Swansea gentlemen as they were saying, so. I thought Steve was South Swansea, but apparently not.
North Winchester.
Yeah.
Heaven's.
Her too. I think the only other item I had was a brief non-public. Unless, you know, it's had anything else.
I'll do the E D A C.
We could do those if you wanted, yeah. Or we'll do them next week either way. I don't think they have a meeting for, their meeting's still in a couple of weeks, right? Let's do them. What the heck? So we'll do, uh, be reappointing Mike Gamarlo and Greg Johnson and appointing Hannah Maynard as an alternate.
Yeah. Make that motion.
What, I'm sorry, what was that for?
So they're gonna do the E D A C appointments that they had table. So it'd be Greg Johnson and Mike Gamarlo for three-year terms.
Oh.
And then Hannah Maynard as an alternate.
Okay, wait, hold on a second. So Mike, you didn't have that in your. So Mike Gamarlo would be for how long?
Three years.
Three years and?
Greg Johnson, three years.
Three years, okay.
And Hannah Maynard, Hannah Maynard, just lady at the last meeting.
Animated.
Uh, for an alternate.
Oh, an alternate.
We usually do those for.
You don't name the term for that, do you?
Uh, do two years.
Two years. Okay, anything else?
You second to that motion, right boss?
Yeah.
Good job.
I don't remember much.
You're gonna make that motion slide?
Yeah. What are we going in under?
A, a compensation. Colby?
I.
Karazinski?
Hi.
All right, with that, Steve left.